Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting in order and we'll start with roll call.
Wasner?
Here.
Crampton?
Here.
Merkier?
Here.
Griswold?
Here.
Bennett?
Here.
Cox?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everybody can stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before the approval of the agenda, I would like to make a note on record that I've excused the attorney today. He's on vacation. And also, we will be moving five B and C, which is the Planning Commission minutes and zoning board field minutes, back to the administrator's report in nine. Motion approved, agenda presented. Please.
Cox?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Merkier? Yes. Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Wasner?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to public discussion for items not on the agenda. I don't see a lot of hands tonight, so we'll move on to public discussion with items on the agenda. I see the same amount of hands. And we will move on to the action agenda. Motion to approve action agenda A and B with the council minutes of May 7, 2025 and a council table.
Support. Crampton?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Wasner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Merkier?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the reports from the city officials and we'll start with the police department chief, Krouse.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few things on the agenda for my department tonight. First is I am asking for approval prior to having the repairs made on, you guessed it, the Tahoe. It was taken in for an oil change safety inspection and it was found that the rear suspension knuckle and wheel bearing are in need of replacement. Unfortunately, the, one of those parts, I believe it's the bearing, is on back, a national back order and only GM makes it, so there are no aftermarket possibilities for that. Quote I got from Conway's is $723.59, so I would ask for council approval to go ahead and have that repair made once the parts come in and once we receive the invoice, go ahead and pay the invoice without having to come back to council.
Merkier?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Wasner?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes. Just a question. Were we sold a lemon, sir?
Well, it does at times seem that way and unfortunately, it's always something different. So I have been in discussion with Administrator Trush. We do have an idea that may be viable, but we have to look into a little bit more before we go forward with that.
Okay.
My title is perfect.
I talked to several other chiefs and most of them have indicated that they do not have nearly the maintenance issues that we have with ours. So I honestly wouldn't assume that maybe we did get sold a lemon, but I can't, I can't say that for the fact, so. And next item on my agenda is request to purchase a new police vehicle. This one will be a Ford. The quote I got from Gornow Ford, which they are the state bid holder for that, so that predicates as having to go out for multiple bids on this, and that is $46,695 for the vehicle alone. I'm also asking for approval for the cost of upfitting of $10,635.75 and the graphics install on the 25 and the removal of the graphics from the 19 totaling $795, which would bring at this point in time, providing everything comes in with no tariff increases, we're looking at $58,125.75. That would put the vehicle on the road.
Any questions on this large purchase?
Just a quick question. The 200 to remove the old one, I didn't catch.
So the graphics on the car, which is Rockwood Police?
Yeah.
They charge 200 to remove those graphics. It's definitely better to have a professional do them. We've tried in the past and when it gets to the point where they don't want to come off and you have to use the the removal wheels and everything with a grinder, it's better to let someone that's insured on how to do that do it. So if they mess up my paint, they can pay to have it repainted.
I see, okay.
Bennett? Griswold?
Yes.
Merkier?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Wasner?
And finally is the monthly report for the month of April. And during the month of April, we responded to 427 incidents, which resulted in 44 arrests and we issued 57 traffic tickets during the month.
Motion to accept and file the police act here report for November 25, dated May 12, 2025.
Support. Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Merkier?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Wasner?
Yes.
Bennett?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no fire report, no treasurer's report, so we'll move on to our DPW Director, Warren.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one thing on the agenda, requesting permission to purchase a new Hustler Super Z 60-inch zero-turn mower for the amount of $12,665.50. This is going to replace our '08. Yeah, I got one a couple of years ago and replaced the '07.
Okay, and this is the state bid price?
State bid, yep. There's the actual price from Curves, $17,350. State bid is $12,655.00.
And then, do you have a plan for the old mower?
It's going to be a backup. She still runs, it's cutting, I'm using it now. In case one goes down, we can hear it and jump on and go, yeah.
Any further discussion on this?
A question. So if the other one breaks, it's just going to get scrapped?
No, I got a, from the '07 or '06, I took all the parts off I needed. So I got, I got a lot of extra parts to put on her. I got pulleys, I got.
You're a mechanic too.
Our DPW guys wear multiple hats and they fix a lot of our stuff.
Yeah. But if something big, you know, a mower's down, I gotta send it to the shop.
We recycle everything.
Okay, well, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay.
Wasner?
Yes.
Merkier?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Bennett? Cox?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item seven and I will ask for a motion to move into closed session.
Cox?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Merkier?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Wasner?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Moving to closed session.
This way? Going this way or?
Yeah. Right, Andy.
Can we make it?
Yeah, I went, I went back to water them and um I guess they, they blocked the bathrooms down.
Well, that's because.
They had some vandalism.
Twice, two days.
Yeah.
Twice.
So they, after I got excited about using the water there, they, so.
Well, like I told you, no, we did the fifty five joint, I'll talk to Bobby, so, and we'll take.
And for all your waiting at home for the faded breath.
Good, back on, okay. Uh, we are back here and I would ask for a motion to come out of closed session.
Make that motion.
Support. Crampton?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Wasner?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Muncher?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to consideration items.
Do we need roll call or not? Do we need roll call?
Yeah, we did it.
Was that roll call? Oh, I thought, I thought there was a mo- I'm sorry, I, I apologize.
Um, consideration items, uh, you guys, everybody has the touch a truck, uh, request from the Rotary of Gibraltar. They're requesting that use Rockwood Mercury Park August twenty third, nine AM to one PM. Uh, includes quiet time from nine AM to ten AM per century overwhelmed children, which I greatly appreciate.
I do too.
The event will be open to the public free of charge, and they would bring in all kinds of trucks and cars from all over. They would also have DJ bounce houses and lunch, and they're asking the mayor and council to forego any fees associated with renting the park. As Gibraltar is a, Rotary is a five oh one C three organization. So with that, I would ask for a motion.
I make that motion as well as clean it up afterwards, if there isn't any cleanup.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll have a talk with them, yeah.
I'll support it. Merker?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Wasner? Cox?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the administrative report, we haven't heard enough of Vicki today yet, so, if you wanna hear more.
I'm back. I'm back. So, the first item is actually a request from the fire chief, who was not able to make the meeting tonight. Uh, he purchased some equipment, medical equipment, with some donated funds from Marathon Petroleum. In the amount of nine hundred and forty-two dollars, so he is asking for, um, authorization to purchase those items.
Bennett?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Merker?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Wasner?
Okay, and then moving on to the items that were moved under my report, uh, the first item is going to be the planning commission meeting from, um, May fifteenth, which was last Thursday, and I'm gonna let, um, husband Wasner.
If there was, we had planning commission meeting to do an expansion, uh, foundation restoration wants to add a warehouse adjacent to the current structure, that would be the south side of the building. If you remember looking at it, and there's a big building, and it has a little alcohol in the office, this would be right next to it. It would be, if you looked out from the expansion building, you'd be looking at the backside of the strip mall. So, that's where they, they're renting it, they're on their property, they just wanna make it bigger, make it a warehouse. They're gonna put doors on the front, and, uh, no more people working there or anything, just more storage space is what they're looking for. But what they ran into is some of it was going against some of the ordinances as far as setback. It would be too close to the south fence that runs along the strip mall, they needed fifteen more feet according to code per se. It doesn't affect anything, it's just the code, same with off the road, the distance that way. But it's gonna be the same starting spot of the existing building, so it's not gonna adjust more or go back, it would be flush with the current building. So, in the planning commission meeting, there's a couple of things that they came up that, that needed to be addressed. The number of parking spots is a little bit under what the code calls for, but it's adequate for what they have. And they will add four more spots to it that are gravel right now, and they will concrete them, so that would more or less take care of. We had a planning commission meeting, it's only more of appeals, that they would deal with this, and so I'll run, run the two of them together. There's a, they needed a loading space requirement, uh, we agreed to waive that, but if you, we thought it could be waived if you ever wanted to. That they don't need the loading space, they got the parking lot to do that, they would, they don't need for semis and everything else to turn around. They don't need that in front of that building, they have had a parking spot to do that already. Uh, landscaping, uh, it's a fence, that, that's, the south side would be exposed to a fence from the strip mall, and the part, the, uh, the adjacent land at the very end of it abuts to a house residential, but it's their property, residential property goes right up to the fence. So as far as them being responsible, uh, foundation for putting in landscaping, if you move, if you own private property, put any landscaping in. They have to move the dumpster location, and they just have to confirm that it eight inches in depth for the concrete to hold it. And then they would, uh, at the very front of this building, two wood street, they would pave that. So that would be same as the driveway going up into the parking lot. So, and then they would provide a volumetric plan, which is a lighting plan, but the building inspector will check that out. When it's done, when the lights are up, to make sure that it conforms to code, and doesn't abut the adjacent or block eyes and traffic or anything else. So, upon that, the planning commission recommended the city council to approve this with these recommendations. And some of them had to be dealt with by the zoning board of appeals. And what they did is, they agreed that they didn't have to, uh, the front and side setback was, was okay, the variance of that was okay. The parking is not changing in addition, but they would have to grant that the spots that they have in gravel, they would pave those to give additional, additional parking. And they would also label the handicap parking spot for, you know, for usage of handicap people. So, based on that, the planning commission was recommending to approve them putting this building, uh, this expansion out. And it's up to you guys to do it.
So, give me a motion for this. I like to make the motion then.
Your support? Any, any impel of conversation?
Yeah, did, do they just have a, a timeframe on when they're going to do this, when it's gonna get started? And, and completed, zippity doodah?
Yes.
Both, okay, and then, for what it's worth, what was the discussion, what will they do for loading then? If there's parking, if there's cars that are parked there, and they need to load, what was their solution for that?
Usually they do their loading and unloading at night shift.
Okay.
After hours, and where the access to this building is would not be parking, it would be a driveway.
Okay.
Going in there, so they could come around with high loads or whatever, to, to load that.
Okay.
I think it's great we're supporting the local business too.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, they're very good.
They're very good, yes.
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 They give back to so ma- so many communities, I, I was shocked to know that, just looking at T-shirts from, that people are wearing, that they, that they're, they're a big sponsor of communities, so. I'm glad to see they're doing well.
Okay.
They advertise on TV, do well.
Yes.
So they gotta be doing good.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, the motion's up.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Merker?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Wasner?
Yeah.
Bennett?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passed.
So the, the second motion needed is just to receive and file the zoning board of appeals minutes?
Yeah.
Just for our records. So the zoning board can actually override council vote, so we just want to receive and file their minutes. So the things that were decided at the zoning board, done.
So you want to be seen.
Are correct, so I just wanna receive and file their minutes, so we put them into the council records.
So I'll make that motion to file the minutes from the.
Both plan and DVA.
Okay. So both plan and DVA, you said, right?
Uh, yes, you said to file, uh, motion to fi- receive and file.
Correct.
Second, yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Wasner? Crampton?
Yes.
Merker?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then I do have one additional item, um, it pertains to the purchase of the new police car. There was an intra fund form, transfer form, included in your packet. I'm just looking for a motion to approve that form to move the budget, to allow for the purchase of the vehicle. So you approved the chief to, to purchase it, but we do need to shift some funds in some of the expense accounts to allow for that purchase.
Right.
So, looking for a motion, motion to approve that.
Make that motion to approve it, the transfers of the funds.
Yeah, I was happy to see that, um, the, the funds from dispatch going back to public safety, so I'm happy to support that.
Cox?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Merker?
Yes.
Wasner? Griswold?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Uh, there's no attorney's report. Move on to my report, uh, we approved the, uh, the new rental agreean- agreement, or, uh, last meeting, and it's gotta have three readings, so I have the first reading here, I'll, I'll take care of the reading for it. This'll be the summary of the ordinance to amend chapter one oh nine, article three of the Rockwood City Code to add new sections one oh nine through two oh one through one oh nine through two fourteen concerning rental property registration. The city of Rockwood ordains that chapter one oh nine, article three, sections one oh nine through two oh one through one oh nine through two fourteen are hereby added to the Rockwood City Code for the purpose of establishing a registration process for rental properties to provide requirements for responsible parties to implement a rental property maintenance plan for such properties, which will protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens, and prevent neighborhood blight, ensure properties are secured, prevent deterioration, and protect property values and neighborhood integrity. The owner of any rental dwelling or rental unit shall register each rental dwelling and all rental units contained within the rental dwelling with the city and shall designate a person as defined in sections one oh nine through two oh seven as a responsible local agent, who shall be legally responsible for operating the registered rental dwelling or rental unit, and shall also be responsible for providing access to such premises, for making the inspections necessary to ensure compliance with the terms of this article and all applicable codes and ordinances adopted by the city. A certificate of compliance shall not be issued if the registration provisions of this article are not complied with. Printed copies of the full text of the ordinance are available for inspection, buy, and distribution to the public at the office of the clerk. Yeah, to conclude the first reading.
I wish I approved the first reading, ordinance number five zero seven.
Support.
Wasner? Oh, hold on, just one, just one second, so this is the, the, the modified one that we received this evening, changes it from a one year to a three year?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
What was the, what was the reason for that change?
I, I was told tonight that, um, go ahead.
I had a conversation, um, with our building officials, and on his recommendation, it was changed to three years. That was his recommendation, it has worked well in other cities, he says when you're doing it once a year, that it, um, tends to be a little bit overwhelming. So spreading it out to the three years also helps the building department, uh, keep on track and be able to get to all those, all the rentals and all the permitting. So it was his recommendation to do it, um, every three years, and then they typically would have a higher cost than was originally associated with just the one year permit. So it gives people time to do the work, sometimes if there's some back and forth on, um, some of the violations, it can take the more than a year to even get those completed on the first time, and then you'd be expir- you know, so you'd already be expired. So sometimes it can take more than one year to get these rentals into compliance, so it was his recommendation to go with this.
So it was his recommendation to go with the three years, he's had it work really well in other cities that he works in, and um
So prevents backlog.
Right.
Okay, but that, and just so I understand, now I have a new question because it's three years, so um so if you have a tenant that is only there for a year, then they still have to get a new certificate?
So this is gonna be on a landowner, not on a tenant.
Okay. All right.
So this would be the landowner, but yes, every time they have a new tenant, they should be getting a new certification.
That was my question.
Yes, so when the person moved out and the new person moved in, it would, my understanding is that it would initiate a renewal of the, of the compliance, and that they would have to go back and have it um done again.
Okay, and the only other change I saw, just cause I just quickly looked at it, was under the fees, is that correct, that's?
Yes.
Okay.
So this obviously allows the fees to um be determined by council as needed.
Okay.
And it does not put those fees directly into, into the ordinance, and we would then just update them annually or so with our fee schedule.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Go ahead.
Wazner?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Mercur?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to old business, Mr. Wazner, you have old business?
Yes.
Mr. Crampton?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Mercur? Mrs. Griswold?
Uh, yes, I have, I can't read my notes here, um the, the, were you gonna talk about the category B grant? Okay, um I, I just, well, I was gonna ask you if you, if you would, but um I just wanted to talk about it here at council, I know that um administration had put out um s- a uh post on social media asking for feedback from residents about how they'd like to spend that, and I just, I, I didn't come prepared to talk about it, I, I wasn't sure if you were going to, but
It, it, it doesn't expire till the twenty eighth, I think.
Twenty eighth of May?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you wanna talk about it, Vicky?
She's like, I didn't wanna put you on the spot, Vicky.
I miss his voice.
Yeah, they're still open, but
Okay.
So yes, so we do have not received this grant yet, we are writing for this grant, so we are looking for resident input, um we have it on Facebook, we also have hard copies that residents can get um from either city hall, I believe I sent them to all the council to voice their, their opinion on what of those areas they would like to see fixed first, you know, there are areas that we hope to get to in the next several years, but we're hoping that this grant um we will get again, that would be amazing, and it would be able to move forward with, you know, one of those three sections, or one of those three options. So we are asking for all the input to be received back by the twenty eighth.
Okay, great.
That will give us time to put together the grant package and submit it.
Okay.
So we, because we will need an action from council to approve us to put in for the grant, we have to, we need a resolution from council to commit funds for our matching portion of it, before we can send in the grant application.
Do you happen to know what that is by chance, the matching portion?
It'll depend on the project, but it's gonna be between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
And depending on what roads we're looking at, will depend on whether the grant will be a major road grant or a local road. Um if it's on Homestead, it's going to be a major road project.
Okay.
So, so on June fourth, I will be coming to you, asking for a resolution for that, for that grant.
Okay, great, sorry to put you on the spot, I didn't intend to.
No, I'm glad you brought it up, because I was hoping to get it on a council meeting last time, and we just didn't get it out till, till it was just through social media, so I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else wanna hear Vicky talk about something?
Um, a couple other things, um this past uh week, the beautification committee got together, uh finally, due to our schedules, we, we had some conflicting um schedules, but we were able to um uh plant some flowers around the city with the help of uh blocks. They were generous in donating some of the flowers, um and then we were able to plant um around city hall and some other locations. If you see any red, white, or blue flowers, that was from the beautification committee. Um and then we were at the memorial looking at that, and wha- um Amy had, had mentioned a project, we did um work on a new project this year, thanks to Amy. She came up with the idea of beautifying the memorial with what we, what, the limited funds that we had. Um and then I wanted to just recognize one of the members of the beautification committee for um coming, coming up to the memorial. She, she really enjoyed that space and wanted to care for it, she uh brought some of her equip, her heavy equipment from her house. Um she weeded the area, even though I, I know Bobby came afterwards. She um, she took a blower to it and, and did some extra weeding, so I wanted to say thank you to Laura Wyland for doing that. Um she did a fantastic job with the extra TLC at the uh memorial, so.
Very nice.
I, I would also like to thank Laura Wyland, uh it says a lot about her dedication to the city, to the residents, to bring her own equipment up there and care for that memorial, and I know that our, our vets care about that memorial, I received an email this week about one that was concerned about uh, you know, the, not the decay, but the, that we needed to do some fluffing up, and I explained to him, our beautification committee's doing that right now, and he was ecstatic, so I appreciate Laura for her work, and all you guys too, for your work uh there, appreciate all your flowers.
And the parade, I'm, I don't wanna overtalk you, but I just wanted to ask, um for those of us that are participating in the parade, um could you talk about the lineup, uh where we'll start the route, and then what time we should be there for lining up?
Um the parade, uh just like last year, we're gonna line up on LaMont Street. And we usually start around nine fifteen, nine twenty, the start of the parade is at ten AM, that's when we'll start marching from La- LaMont Street to Hero River Drive. And then we'll uh make a westbound turn to Fourth Street, and then a northbound turn and, and at Mercur Park. While at the park, when we enter there, we will have a, a service of War Memorial. And then uh going forward in the park, we have plenty of activities, we have bounce houses, we have um uh hopefully a car show, if the weather's good, with a DJ, food trucks, we got other, a restaurant reached out today that wants to uh give out their food. Um there's helicopter rides, there's gonna be all kinds of stuff, uh there's gonna be painting for the kids, books giveaways, so it's gonna be a great time, I hope to see everybody out there. Please flood the park, and let's, let's make it a good day. Uh as for the um uh lineup, as you said, pretty much the, the ma- the, the trucks, the fire trucks are gonna lead the thing, and I'm gonna have the band behind the fire trucks, cause we're gonna have a lot of hundred kids there from what I understand, so it's gonna be a lot. And then going back from there, we're just gonna kinda backfill, uh I did talk to, oh, we're gonna have the mounted division here in Township, Mounted Horse Division. And they want to be a little bit toward the front of the parade, so I asked her if I could just space her out from the back of the band, do a couple vehicles of some sort, and then the horses, and she's fine with that. After that, I think people, and Vicky's gonna be there, kinda coordinating things, and kinda fall in, you know, in no certain uh strict order. And, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
About nine fifteen, nine twenty, we start lining up on LaMont Street.
And will anything change if it rains?
It's not gonna rain, it's supposed to.
When it doesn't rain?
Um, we're, we're going forward with it at this point, we're lined up and ready to go, it may put a damper on uh activities in the park at some point, but the weather looks to be about, I think sixty-five and sunny right now, so let's pray that that's gonna be great, it's gonna be a great time. And we have some donations, and I'll thank them after the parade, but I wanna see everybody out at the parade, so.
Who walks behind the horses with the five AM bucket in her shoes?
They, they actually do have somebody to do that.
You were doing that, you're not doing it?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Yeah.
You're doing the nachos?
Hot dog.
Nachos?
Yes.
After clean up the horse.
Yes, I would like to thank the Lions Club, because they have also volunteered to come cook the hot dogs for us, so I'll give a, a long list of thank you down there, but
Um, interrupt you.
No, you're good.
Okay, and then one other thing, we ju- actually you just talked about it, and I just wanted to mention it again, since it's going forward, it looks like we'll have a touch a truck event um at Mercur Park on August twenty third, uh twenty twenty five, I'm, I'm positive they'll take over um announcing this, but since we spoke about it, I just wanted to reiterate that, so, that'll be great, that's all I have for old business.
Mr. Bennett, any old business?
Hey.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
The only thing I have for old business is I did meet with the Rotary about the music in the park that we spoke of. Um, Mr. Todd Taylor, uh there was a question about the electrical. He said, uh, meeting with him and looking at the electrical, the electric's gonna be fine for the band that they're gonna have, and they also bring a generator, a small one if needed, for this instant. Um so I think we'll be good there, uh we looked at kinda logistics of where we would put everything, the bar, the band, the band would bound to be under the main pavilion where the electric is. And then everybody else might fan out to the east toward the baseball fields, and then the bar would be at the other pavilion over there. They would take care of all the liquor license and, and everything. The band is a five hundred dollars, uh we would pay for the band, and then we, they would give us all the proceeds gathered through the night from the bar. Uh you know, that would go full to the city or wherever we wanna do with it. Um I also did talk to a local food bank, and uh Karen Mercy. And uh they're interested if we do this, of taking all the cans and taking them back to put toward the food bank, have that money.
Nice.
I thought we would set some cans up just for the food bank, for cans, and then we bag them up and give them to the food bank, and they could cash it in toward the food, so I talked, touched base with her about that also.
Oh, great.
That's awesome, okay.
So I guess at this, is there any other questions about music in the park that you have for me?
Um, I was gonna cover it under new business, but I can talk about it now, I did reach out to um Dotson Electric um to get a quote on a new GF CI at the pavilion, um and I sent that, I can't remember if I sent it to council or just, just to Troy, but the quote was a total of seventeen hundred and fifty dollars for um adding a, a, a new GF CI at that pavilion somewhere else, so probably in the backside, obviously you wouldn't want two next to each other. Um so just, just for reference, if um we wanted to do that in the future, we have that quote, so.
Are you talking additional?
Additional, yes, yes, they would run it back, I think, to the bathrooms or the main boxes, Bobby said, so.
And that would be, I think, three receptacles if I read that correctly, so.
Cause the current one is two and two.
Two.
Yes, yeah. Uh the date is slated for August fourteenth, which is Thursday, uh eighth Thursday. So I guess I would entertain a motion to, if we wanna go forward with this, I need to get with the Rotary and have them start making their plans, uh they will do some advertising for it also.
What was your motion for?
I, I would ask the council if they wanna entertain a motion, move forward with this music in the park.
I'll make the motion of move forward.
Support.
Yep.
Um, do we need to vote on the band, or we do that, or that's?
I think the Rotary's handled that.
Yeah, the Rotary's handled it.
The fees?
This time, no.
Well, we're paying for the band, right?
The five hundred dollars for the band, that's what she means.
So yeah, we should make a motion for that, too.
So maybe the motion would be approved to go forward with the event and pay for the band?
Yes, for five hundred dollars for the band.
Yeah. Make that motion to move forward with the band, and to pay the bet, put the five hundred dollars for it.
Support. I know. All right, Mercur?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Bennett?
Good.
Wazner?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, I'll reach out to Todd Taylor, and we'll get the ball rolling, cause he said it takes about a month to get the liquor license. Oh, the other thing we talked about real quick is no liquor, it'll be beer and seltzers, like you said.
Okay.
First year event, we don't want anything crazy happening, so, any other questions about that, just please reach out to me, and I can ask that. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
We gotta do
I'm, I'm sorry, um
That was old business.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, I got ahead of myself, any new business, Mr. Wazner?
No.
Mr. Crampton? Mrs. Mercur?
No.
Mrs. Griswold?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
I have none, I would ask for adjournment.
Support. Bennett?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Mercur?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Wazner?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, media adjourn.